All right, I'd like to call to order the October 28, 2024, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the role?
Commissioner Batista?
Here.
Sorry, Chair Batista. Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Landis?
Here.
Commissioner Stenson?
Present.
Commissioner Betcher?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan has requested to be absent tonight.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion to get an excused absence for Commissioner Morgan?
I make a motion that we excuse Commissioner Morgan for tonight's meeting.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Morgan for tonight's meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, item number three, approval of the September 23, 2024 meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections? I am not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Let the record show there is no public in person here tonight. Is there anybody online who has signed up to speak?
No one online has signed up to speak.
Okay, we'll go ahead and skip on to item number five then. Overview of the Urban Forestry Management Plan.
Good evening Commissioners, I am Laura Reed, I'm the Stormwater Program Manager. Okay, great. Thank you for your patience on that. Okay, so I'm here to just briefly introduce the Urban Forest Management Plan that is currently underway here at City of Mount Lake Terrace. This is the first of its kind effort. This is a plan to try to see how we're going to be managing our forest resources going forward in the city. This is made possible by a $120,000 grant from the Washington Department of Natural Resources and a grant application that was written by a resident, Audrey Meyer, who some of you may already know. She's been very dedicated to this cause for quite a while. So I wanted to just kind of tell you what's been going on and sort of give an opportunity to provide input at this point. I will be coming back to you in the spring when we have a draft that you can review what's going on, and I also would like to hear from you if you have any thoughts, or especially if you have any thoughts about how we can reach the broadest possible audience for this plan, because we feel like it's the most important thing is that it's really driven by residents. Okay, just to briefly kind of describe what's going on, we have been able to hire Planet Geo, who are specialist consultants in the design of urban forest management plans. They are a software company, they have a product called Tree Plotter, but they are also specialists in working with cities on how to develop their first plans, on how to develop plans that are their succession plans later on in the process. So we have completed most of a tree canopy, tree inventory for street trees in the city, and I'll be talking to you a little bit about that as we go forward, but the process is that we are doing a street tree inventory, we're talking to staff in small groups, and also getting input from the public primarily in the form of two public surveys, which we have already done, completed one.
Can you quickly explain what is, what is Tree Plotter?
It's the software that's developed by Planet Geo, and it helps to map both individual trees and also tree canopy. So it's helpful for cities in order to determine, you know, what their goals are for a tree canopy. Our goals for tree canopy will be developed by Planning Zone.
Okay, so it's just, just a real, real focused GIS type program then?
It is a GIS-based program. To be completely honest, I don't know the full in and out of it, but I can, I know enough to know that's, that's what it does. Also, we don't, we're not dependent upon this particular software. We can take what they are collecting and put it into our GIS system so that we can decide whether or not we want to use it in the future.
Okay.
So I think you're probably all pretty aware of the benefits of the urban forest to the city. Our philosophy in this is that everyone deserves the benefits provided by trees in Mount Lake Terrace. And so what we're working toward is a plan that allows us to both, you know, grow and meet our planning goals, but also retain and, and plant more trees in the city so that 20 years from now it's not a completely grace kind of scape to look at. So what have we done so far? We've talked about this a little bit, but we are getting gearing up to do our next public survey. I was, I'm working with Audrey on the questions. We have some preliminary results from the street tree inventory, but there is still one section of the city that needs to be captured, and so what I'm talking to you about will be kind of preliminary look at what's happening. And then we're also looking, looking to see from our small group meetings with staff what kind of policies need to be integrated to implement the plan going forward. This is just talking about the, the first public survey results. We, we did get over 100 participants, which was fantastic, and we're really happy about that. This time around, we gathered more demographic information than we have in the past, so we were looking at kind of where to prioritize resources, what kind of things matter the most to folks. But at the same time, we would like to do better next time around in terms of diversifying who participates in the study, and that's based on a number of different things. Diversity in ages of people who participate, portions of the city where people live, we'd like it to be more racially diverse, we'd like to have more people who speak languages other than English participate in the survey. And to that end, we have translated the survey into both Spanish and Vietnamese, and we've, we're actively looking to how we can bring more folks who speak those languages and get their input on the survey. Yeah.
So I have a quick question. The lines you've drawn on the map, are they equal population areas?
I believe they're derived from census tracts.
Okay, so they're roughly, like, it's roughly, when I look at the map and I see 14% here, 30% there, that's like roughly indicative of like that area's proportion of the city? It's like...
Yes, I, I think so. I'm not exactly sure how those are put together. Is that, is that the way census tracts are done?
Not necessarily. I think so you could see like on the west side of the city, that's a pretty big area that was 31%, and about half of it is that north, half in the middle is 14%. So that's relatively pretty much the same, I would say, you know, whereas you can see just below that at 30%, that, that was probably that area which is south of town center probably had your biggest population right there of respondents. But you also see a fairly good mix around the city of people that responded, right, for the number of people that did. So it's not a bad overall response, I guess, but yeah, the, the census districts are not necessarily equal in population. You know, it was kind of divided and measured, and then you're just kind of measuring based on the nuances and the differences over time, right? So...
Okay, just kind of as a general comment, I would be interested to see this a bit more granular, and also maybe like, I know we've got neighborhoods that we're sort of looking at creating, or, you know, there's questions about if, you know, the lines we have for our current like neighborhood boundaries are accurate, so I'd be interested to see like, you know, based on this data, if any trends pop up, and anything that might reinforce that, and anything that might map to that.
So more like the sub-areas?
Yeah, like, you know, do the people on 212th have a different opinion than the people who are living kind of in the southeast part of town, and then like north and south, I guess that's north and south Melody Hill, like, are there differences, kind of opinions within the areas?
Yeah, I mean, that definitely would be interesting information. I'm not sure if we would be able to get enough people to take the survey in each sub-area to say that we had a representative sample. That's my only concern on that.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's something to look into, I just wrote that down, sub-areas.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question too, I was just curious about the boundaries on the map.
We, I mean, we followed the, the census boundaries because, you know, that, that was sort of the information that we had is this, you know, starting rate. So it's one way to do it, there's many other ways. With the, the, the plan needs to be implemented by staff and also by people in the community. So part of what this is about is to talk to people who are in different parts of the city and get their input on where they think there are obstacles and opportunities. So that is what has been done for, for different group meetings, one for engineering, one for public works and parks, another for planning, and I think we're gonna also, you know, we're gonna also meet with the leadership from different departments in the city once we have some specific things that we're wanting to move forward to test how that will go. But this kind of just shows a little bit of a breakdown of some of the main challenges, some of where people are coming from, and some of the top goals for staff in terms of the plan. As I mentioned, this is a preliminary kind of effort, but I'm kind of frankly shocked at how many street trees we have in this city. It's way more density of street trees than, for example, Shoreline, which I thought would be fairly com... Yeah, well, I mean, I basically, you know, I thought that we'd have about 4,000 based on Shoreline's numbers, but we have well over 6,000 or 7,000 street trees, and this kind of shows you, this is some of them, but it shows you sort of the, some of the breakdown of what different kinds we have, and the sizes and the condition of the trees. We're also trying to identify if there are any hazard trees out there that need to be immediately acted upon, so that was an important part of this work that was done this summer.
I'm just curious, when comparing us to Shoreline, are their numbers up to date to reflect all the trees they are supposed to be getting from the sound transit construction? Because I know they...
No, I don't think so. That was prior to, to that going forward. I mean, this was, this was me kind of estimating like how much money to set aside for the street tree inventory, so it's sort of a rough, a rough estimate. But, you know, it kind of tells you a bit how mu... you know, how much diversity of trees that we have, and then also the sizes.
And by street trees, you, you mean just trees that are in the right-of-way that are under city management?
Yes, yes.
We have that many arborvitae in the right-of-way?
That's what it says.
Interesting.
You know. I, I think that...
Yeah.
That's, that's, that may be not arbor, arbor, I don't know, arborvitae, vitae? I don't know what it is.
I say arborvita, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, and I can find out more, but this is information that they're, they're still collecting, so...
I would say we do, and here's why, because a lot of people think that their property is their property and it's actually right-of-way. So in those, you know, instances where we have right-of-way, you may not have a sidewalk, people plant stuff and it's actually in the right-of-way, so, you know, somebody puts arborvita and they put a buffer along there and it's actually planted in the right-of-way. So I, I would believe...
Like a hedge.
Oh, yeah. So I would believe that, never wholeheartedly like, oh, yeah, there's a lot of stuff planted out in the right-of-way.
I guess this begs another question, how many of these are at risk because people are not aware of the limitations of their property lines?
The only time that these trees would be, you know, something would happen is in the case of where there would be some type of street improvement or, you know, sidewalks that would be built. But in that case, a lot of times during development, then we would be making people plant trees or replace, you know, these things. So I would say probably the vast majority of them are gonna remain probably where they are.
Okay. And we have a way or a mechanism to replace them when it turns out that they, you know, sort of took over some right-of-way that then has to be turned back into the city?
Well, if it's, if it's adjacent development, you know, once in a while we do a street project, but then again, I mean, now you're seeing our street projects are built as complete streets, right? So it's not like you're just going in there and laying pavement, you're putting in sidewalks and you're putting in amenity zone, which is, you know, landscaping and trees and that and such. So probably back in the old days, we'd wipe out a lot of this if we were doing a street project, but not so much today, right? We're trying to make sure that you have the full amenities when we're doing a capital project like that.
Great.
Does this study show what kind of capacity we have to add more street trees?
We have already done a mapping exercise to, to assess that. The big problem in Mount Lake Terrace is underground utilities. You know, we can't, we have so many places that it looks like it'd be a great place for a tree, but there's a water main underneath it and we can't plant it nearby then. We have, in order to do the street tree planting project, we had to do a mapping where we buffered all the underground utilities in order to determine where we could plant them. So I think, I think we've got that fairly well covered, but we would like to identify, you know, opportunity as well.
It's good to know, because I know some of the concern in the past has been with the type of redevelopment that we've seen so far, trees on private property are going away. You know, they, and sometimes they have to replace some, but not as much as that we would like, because, you know, they want to maximize their, their square footage, and so unfortunately, it's looking like the right-of-way is gonna have to, you know, make that up to, to help, you know, maintain the tree canopy. Unless we get a little bit more stringent in our, you know, development guidelines and say, no, you gotta have more open space, and it's gotta be well thought out and allow, you know, allow for trees as opposed to kind of what we're seeing right now with, you know, the larger townhome developments where it's just...
Sure.
Where at one time there were a lot of trees, you know, trees on the private property, and now it's, there's, there's none and there's hardly, you know, and it would be hard for a tree to really grow there now, given what little open space is left.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. I mean, I think it's almost worse for the small and mid-size development than the larger, because the larger seems, you know, has open space requirements, but the smaller ones, you know, not so much. Okay, any other questions or... So we're really gonna go all out for this second public survey, and these are some of the things that we have identified as ways we can reach out to people, but we are also very interested in your ideas. If you have any other ideas that are not on this list and you would like us to reach out to folks in that, in that way, we welcome that input. Like I said, this is just the very beginning of, of the work that's gonna go on, and I anticipate that we'll be working on this through Q2 next year. We have to have it done by the end of May 2025, because that's a grant requirement, so it's not gonna linger. And this is the section, just for questions and discussion if anybody has any thoughts.
Kind of a question on, you know, the surveying. We've, we tried to do a lot of surveying, you know, as part of the comp plan process, and now, you know, we've done, we were trying to do surveys for stuff leading up into that, and now we got this, I, I'm just curious and concerned that, you know, it's great to get the public input, but when they're constantly being, hey, take our survey, take our survey. I mean, are we seeing diminished returns on the participation rates of our surveys? Because we're, we seem to be doing a lot lately.
No, I mean, it's a really good point. This will be the third survey that we've put out to the community for street, for around trees and tree planning. We're trying to make this one different and sort of emphasize the whole idea, it's like, you talked, we listened, this is kind of what we want to test going forward in terms of tools and strategies to implement the, the plan. But yes, there's always the risk of fatigue.
Anybody else, questions?
Several, but I always ask questions, sorry. Does anyone else want to ask questions first?
Just double check with our online commissioner, don't want to forget you. Commissioner Landis, you got any questions?
No, no questions, thanks though.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Thanks. So I know the Parks Department and Sound Transit have some kind of deal worked out where like Sound Transit removed some trees for building the light rail, but now we've got these extra many thousands of trees to put around. I'm curious, is the Parks Department, I know this is like a street tree inventory, I'm curious how this works with any efforts the Parks Department might be doing to also develop a tree inventory. I know Forterra also like kind of created like a sort of forest health survey a little while back, and, you know, efforts that we might have with like extra capacity for trees as well. I'm kind of curious how this aligns with any of those efforts we might have.
I have been working with Denell from the Park, you know, who's the Parks Project Manager, on her specific project, which is to plant trees as mitigation for sound transit. So to, to my knowledge, they're not doing any kind of inventory work with associated that. It's very much like we're buying trees, we're planting them in these parks, this is the planting plan, and let's get this thing out to small public works. I believe that Forterra work was focused on invasive stuff, right? So trying to manage the existing invasive problems in the, in the parks.
Would that be part of the Urban Forestry Management Program?
Yeah, I mean, definitely invasive control ongoing is always a part of that kind of thing, so yes.
Okay, and also are some trees better than others for different tasks, like for habitat restoration or urban wildlife corridors or urban heat island effect, that kind of thing? Like, do we have, like, we have the number and the type of trees, but do we have like an inventory of the quantity as well, or the quality, like, or different qualities that each tree, each tree might have?
Are you talking about native plants versus non-native?
Yeah, or also I think in Seattle, as part of the Urban Greenways Program, at one point they had like some kind of urban wildlife corridor where they planted a bunch of pollinators down like certain streets, or pollinating plants down certain streets. Is that something that the tree management program might also have to say about the inventory, like, you know, other parts that we might look at, like urban habit, urban wildlife habitat?
It's definitely something we can look at, and I'm just writing this down. I know that Audrey Meyer, for example, is really interested in the idea of having a food forest, like a display food forest in Ballenger Park, and she wants to, you know, kind of move that forward. But it's important to understand that this, the street tree stuff is very detailed, but the stuff that's not in the street tree right-of-way will be at a canopy level.
Yeah.
Right? So I think there's definitely room for different kinds of initiatives to, you know, support pollinators or wildlife, that kind of thing. But we'll pretty much be looking at more what's our, what's our canopy goal and then how are we gonna get to it.
Okay. I can see this being a template for also looking at other, you know, like tree inventory in public areas, or even in, you know, private areas when we're identifying like key species. So I think this is good foundation, important foundational work that, you know, will probably inform other things. If there's room for it and it's easy, I would kind of be interested to see like, you know, how those trees translate into other values, like, you know, urban food production, or the ability to shade, or the ability to provide, you know, habitat for certain kind of wildlife, if like that's easy to do.
Yeah, actually, that is part of what they are going to do with their, their software once we finish the, you know, the canopy assessment and the tree inventory is to develop basically a value for those benefits. Shade, you know, shading, cooling, you know, better improved air quality, noise abatement, encouraging people to be outside and exercise, that kind of thing. So that will be part of what they come up with.
Cool, I'd be interested to see the noise abatement. The quality of, or, and then kind of the timeline you're talking about, I know we've got several other plans, but I feel like this should be really important part of the work of. I want to see canopy coverage in our transportation plan, where we're talking about streets and shading, because that's a pretty big source of urban heat island effect. I think it would also be helpful to sort of establish tree canopy government, cover, like, maybe that's something we want to look at by zoning. You know, if we have like, you know, I don't know, when I, you know, was living in pre-manufactured developments, every house would get like two trees in front or whatever, so I don't know if that's like a regulation we'd be looking at or something, but I'm curious sort of how the timing of this fits in with some of the other things we might be looking at in terms of like transportation and buildings and zoning.
Well, the, I mean, the canopy cover is going to be by zoning, and I think we've also integrated it a bit into the overall city comprehensive plan. I've been working with Jonathan Morales on a couple of goals that came out of that plan and how we're gonna fulfill them through this work. It's also something that's part of the new stormwater permit for the city is assessing tree canopy and creating goals for it. As far as transportation plans, that's a good question. I, I think we'll just talk to our traffic engineer about what that looks like, or if that is part of what he's been doing, but we haven't, you know, haven't been talking about it.
They're, they're working on it.
Okay.
The plan adoption 2025, and we have zoning to put in place. So we've talked a lot moving forward with any of the tree planning we've been doing with Laura and the folks that have been working on these things of, you know, of balancing out the level of development we need to do and in what areas, and then tree preservation as well, right? So I think that's a continuing discussion of how we, how do we best do both? How do we get the most diversity out of the tree planting that we do? There are trees that are better suited to be street trees versus other trees on private property, et cetera. Just to add to the sound transit thing, so for the priority trees that were part of priority habitat and species, Parks got a fee in lieu of. So one of the issues was instead of just saying, we took out this many trees here, we're just gonna blanket this area with trees. Problem with that approach is depending on what the different parks are used for, right? Is it a park used for recreation? If it is, well, trees all over the ball field isn't really that great, right? So we wanna, we wanna plant trees where it's good to plant trees appropriately. So Parks, actually, I was just, we're just getting the final numbers for the, the tree planting. I believe the city got $254,000 as part of sound transit for the priority trees they removed. And then Parks is doing planting... And then Parks is doing, uh, planning, Donnell and the Parks Group, based on the best way to utilize that money. And there's also discussion, when we've been talking about trees lately, it's not just about planting trees, but it's tree health and maintaining our trees, right? And that urban forest canopy is really important. So just plant, 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 okay, great, but then, you know, we have invasives in the trees and the, the health is poor. So we want to really do both things when we're, when we're doing these things is making sure the health of the trees is in good condition. At the same time, we're keeping our forest, we're keeping our canopy and we're diversifying the different trees that we find in the city. So somebody, some species gets a disease, we're not losing a whole bunch of trees, et cetera. So it's about planting and improving and balancing that in areas that we need, you know, higher density development. And how do we do that? Well, we don't want to just cut down every tree and be like, oh, here we go, you know, like Laura's saying. It's just pavement that, you know, we're going to try to do both, but we realize we're going to be more limited in some areas than not, right?
Yeah, and I think the street trees especially are like the most powerful that we have in some of these more dense areas like the town center.
Right.
So it's really important to get, you know, the coverage right and the canopy right. And I think the, you know, I would like to see coverage over all of our streets and in more dense areas. I think the taller trees are also going to be important as well. So making sure that we have room for that. I don't know if there's like some kind of engineering analysis that's done with tree canopy versus hurt here, urban heat island effect, if that's something that we can do in the planning stage or not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. They're working on the transportation plan, like I said, but I, I haven't personally been involved in that connection with the transportation planning. We can, you know, maybe that's a next step as well as we kind of add to this initial grant funding that Laura's got. And of course, you know, we'll be adding to this and amending it as we go. So there's a lot of considerations. We also have, you know, critical areas ordinance, right? So we have tree protections there, and we do have some tree protections as part of our development code. So how do all these things work together when we, when we put them all together, right?
Yeah, so I think that is a kind of like level of analysis I would like to see as we're making these decisions going forward. Like, this is very important work here to inventory and then also kind of establish a baseline and then also like target goals for going forward. Like, I think, I don't know if I've seen this done in a planning process, but maybe I also just haven't seen enough planning processes. But I think this is something that is, especially with the changing climate, is going to be really critical 20 years from now. And so we should really be looking at it now as much as we can.
Yeah.
When it comes to the point that you brought up earlier, you know, utility sometimes really restrict what we're able to do. Is there a list of trees that maybe have a smaller root structure or that could thrive in more of a, like a tree vault type environment that wouldn't interfere with the utilities that much that we can pull from?
I mean, yes, we do have a, sorry. We do have a recommended tree list and a non-recommended tree list that is available online, but also through the Street Tree Project, we specifically looked for trees that had non-invasive roots and ones that were tough enough to survive in a street tree kind of environment. So we do have some resources there.
And to kind of bring things way back to like the original town center plan, when we were talking about that, when we were talking about kind of like the items in the right of way, you know, things like benches and bike racks and the more decorative lamp posts, one of the discussions was trees. And the idea that was floated at the time, by me, was to have our different neighborhoods have uniquely different designs. So what we, the, the kind of the design makeup that we, you know, had for the town center was going to be different than what we have in some, some of our neighborhood centers. And that was going to, you know, hopefully extend to trees as well. So like the town center would have, you know, primarily this species of tree, but when you go to another part of town, we have a different species of tree. So, you know, it kind of, you, you have that uniqueness in, you know, visual appearance. And then you would also, the idea was also having, you know, maybe developing some sort of street tree boulevard type system that leads you into those neighborhood centers as well. So sort of, the trees sort of become a thematic element of that neighborhood itself. So we never, I mean, right after the town center got plat, the first town center plan got passed, you know, we kind of hit with the huge recession. Nothing ever moved forward with that. And, you know, this is kind of the first time we've really started talking about this again. So hopefully we can sort of add that thematic element as well into our planning. So obviously we want a diverse planting of trees, but if it's possible to have, you know, a concentration like a, you know, it's like a species designated, okay, this, this area, we're going to have it, we're going to focus, try and do these species of trees and, you know, obviously where, where it works in this area, it's going to be a different species, just so, you know, you get, you get that visual appearance that's different. And honestly, to break up sort of the malaise of suburban blah, you know?
Sure.
Try, try and make it more interesting. And the trees were just going to be one part of that. And, you know, here we are talking about trees, so this looks like an opportunity where we can at least think about that, you know? In practice, I don't know how easy that will be to do, but, you know, because there's a lot of coordination with what kind of street improvement projects do we have going on? When do we have the opportunity to affect the right, you know, the trees in the right of way versus, you know, if it's just sort of infill development, you know, if a project is big enough or the city is forcing the private developer to improve, you know, the, the frontage there. So it's some, some, something to consider, so.
Yeah, I mean, that has to do with trees, but I feel like it's more kind of a design standards, sort of.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you kind of lay the groundwork in the tree plan and then you implement it through design standards.
Yeah.
Great. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Any other questions? If, if there's anything, I just wanted to go back here. If, if, if there's any other venues that you think we haven't considered that you would like us to use to promote the second survey, or, yeah, second survey for the plan, please let me know. But we're hoping to be really comprehensive and to try to, as I said, reach the widest audience. We also, I also have been working with the RPAC committee, so I've gone to them a couple of times to talk to them about it and get their input, and also the DEIC folks, so things are going on that way. But yeah, unless there's any other questions or comments, I'll be heading out.
Have we, have we heard anything from the development community about this?
Not yet. It's, you know, I mean, it's early days.
Yeah.
I think we'll, we'll be, you know, we'll be, we'll be bringing them into the conversation when we have some specific things that we want to test.
Okay.
You know, because at this point, we don't have any kind of policies where they could respond to it. I think that's the right.
Yeah.
Let, let me know if you think there's another way to do it, but.
Yeah, I think we always want to bring the development community to the table as we, as we move forward. It's just kind of a, it's a practical part of what we do every day, right? And we want to make this work. And we want to make development better as well, right? And trees are going to do that in addition to all these other great things that trees do. So, yeah, I think, you know, this is, a lot of people have an urban, urban forester that they employ, that, you know, these standards are not new, right? In a lot of jurisdictions, so it has been done successfully in other places. So we want to make sure that we're successful too.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Let me stop sharing here.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, item number six. Looks like we're holding a vote for vice chair, so.
Got it.
So it doesn't quite work that way. So, so normally, you know, it's, you know, open up the floor to nominations if anybody wants to nominate anybody else to be vice chair, or if you want to nominate yourself, that's absolutely fine. And if you're kind of concerned or worried, you don't, you're not sure if this is something that you want to do, it is close to the end of the year, so we probably will only have four meetings at the most.
Most, yeah.
For the first meeting of the new year by code. We, the first meeting of the new year is when we're supposed to elect both the chair and the vice chair. So, you know, it's just a small period of time that we need to fill in, but it's great if you want to, you know, kind of dip your toe in the water, see if you like it. And if you, you know, if you do like it, you can, again, you know, throw your hat in the ring again when it comes for 2025, or, you know, if you're, you're willing to step up and, you know, just cover for the rest of this year, but you pretty, you don't have an interest in doing it. After that, that's, that's fine as well, so.
Good question before we begin.
Yeah.
What's the update on our new planning commissioner?
It's on the agenda. I was afraid you were going to ask and I should have looked, but I believe, maybe Shannon looked, but I believe that appointments for boards and commissions is on, this is the fifth Thursday, so there's not council, but I believe their next council meeting, they have appointments to boards and commissions. Correct me if I'm wrong, on the seventh, the seventh or the 14th, it's on council's agenda for appointment. So it's, it's coming up.
Okay, so they wouldn't even.
Thanks.
So they'd still have like maybe a month left before, you know, the end of the year, and then we'd go through the process again.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so the floor is open. If anybody wants to make a nomination or nominate themselves.
I was going to nominate Aneen, but she said not it, so.
I'll make a motion to nominate Commissioner Betcher for vice chair.
Yeah, sure, I'll accept.
Accept.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so we'll just go ahead and wait. Does anybody else want to make any other nominations? Not to, just to want to cut anybody off who might be interested as well. All right, so I am not hearing or seeing anything. So we have a, a motion to nominate Commissioner Betcher for vice chair for the rest of the 2024 term. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Hearing none, that motion carries. So Commissioner Betcher will be the vice chair for the rest of this year.
Thank you, I'm honored. I promise to cast the tie-breaking vote in the planning senate.
All right, item number seven, director's report.
Just wanted to let everyone know that council adopted the comp plan on October 16.
Yes.
Thanks to all you guys and others. They made a few changes. Some language was added as far as the properties across the street for 57th that essentially that the city wouldn't go in there and take properties unless it was associated with redevelopment during redevelopment time. But there was never an intention to go in there and, you know, basically remove businesses in that location. So, but doing planning and having a road network that makes sense is important. And then some just performance measures in how we're reviewing different things as we move forward. So, and then staff had just some edits, we still have edits. So we got a final plan that we gave to Department of Commerce, so we have to get it to Commerce within 10 days, and we did that last week. But we still just have some minor tweaks that we felt needed to be done as far as editing goes and mistake, little mistakes, just those things. So that will be up on the website. It should be on the website later this week. And if anybody wants a paper copy, just let me know or Shannon know, and be happy to get anybody a paper copy if they want that as well. We typically don't, I mean, I like a paper copy just because, you know, I like a paper copy, because I like to look at it and think about it. But it will be available electronic, electronically, but if you want something that you go home and look at periodically too, I get it, so we can get that for you. I said a little bit earlier tonight that we'll be coming back to you next meeting and we'll be laying out our work plan for the next several months for you guys a little early, just because it's going to be boom, 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 boom. And that's because there was a lot of legislation that was passed that's all kind of due now, and it's kind of coinciding. So we're going to give an update of what all of that looks like. What is House Bill 1110 mean? Well, I don't know what that means, but, so just all those things. And we'll give you a little cheat sheet to say, well, this is what that means and this is what we need to do. And then kind of outline those priorities based on when we need to have those things done. We're going out for a request for a proposal for a housing plan. We have a lot of that work done in our housing element and the work that was done for the comp plan, but doing a more comprehensive housing plan, which is also going to inform additional work that we need to do for the middle housing requirements, which is also going to inform zoning and the new zoning districts that we have. And all of that needs to be adopted by June. So that will be a big, important part of all the work that we're doing as well coming up. So I kind of want to wrap that together because it all impacts each other. Housing, middle housing, zoning, it's really kind of all one beast that we'll be trying to get our hands around and making sure that it works proper. So that will be zoning and then the components of state law, which interpretation is changing weekly for anybody that works as a planner. The state seems to change their mind a lot, which is not unusual. When new legislation's passed, it's kind of a wonky process to begin with, but all the other jurisdictions are going through it just like we are. So we'll just, we'll work with it and get through it the best that we can, but really want to put some good zoning together that works for the city, because this is pretty critical for us as well. So we'll be working on that and I'm trying to think what else is kind of fun that's going on. There's some different celebration type things that are happening in the cities for the city's anniversary that will be kind of above and beyond some of the typical things that, that we've done, you know, with the tree lighting and all of that. So our events coordinator is working on those things, so stay tuned as we kind of get those all worked out as far as some of, some additional events that are going to be happening in the city as well as we move forward. So you guys can participate in, in those things. Like I said, transportation plan's going to be coming to you, the new stormwater plan's going to be coming to you. There's just going to be a lot of stuff that we're fitting, fitting in here, here and there as we move forward. So like I said, it's going to be fairly active. I'm not sure who is going to get appointed for the planning commissioner. Our staff's not really involved in that, so I couldn't even tell you if I wanted to, hey, they're looking at so-and-so. We do have a new communications. Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
So hopefully.
I was hoping it was the air system at first, but I'm like, oh, I don't think it is.
Yeah, yeah. As I always say, they turn on the faucet.
Yeah, that's kind of crazy.
I didn't even bring my coat in, it's in my car. But otherwise, yeah. So any questions that anybody has, just as far as anything that's been going on?
No, I would, I would say probably the most well-attended breakout sessions at the planning conference were related to all of the new legislative changes.
Yeah.
And there is definitely a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
So it's--
We participated in a couple of Zoom meetings and our team's meetings too that the state and others have put on, and it's very chaotic. And I'm old enough to remember 1990 when GMA was unleashed. And it feels very, I tell newer staff, it feels very much like that to me right now where it's like, hey, we've got all these really great ideas, we just don't really know how they're going to work yet. And so that's kind of what happens is once the legislation is enacted, then there's always the, the Washington Administrative Code guidelines and then, well, what, what do you think that means? Well, what does that mean? And then relaying that information to local governments to implement. So it's just kind of part of the process and we have to try to be as patient as we possibly can in just working through it. But it does get a little bit, put people in a tight timeline because, you know, you work on stuff and you have only so much time to do it. And so when it's kind of wiggling around, it's not great, but I'm sure a lot of people are freaking out like I am right now, like, ah, make up your mind. So anyways, but we'll get there.
I know we're a fair ways into the middle housing effort right now. It sounds like we have to finish the housing program before we adopt the middle housing?
There was just money set aside, ARPA money for a housing study. And my idea is we've got a really good start on that housing stuff already because we had to do it as part of our comp plan. We really need to do that foundational stuff. So let's take the foundational stuff that we already have, add to it to do a complete housing study, and then also use the remainder of those funds where we really need it, which is the implementation part, which is the zoning and make the zoning, get help to make the zoning work. So for me, it would involve, you know, a prime consultant helping us, some urban design helping us, and then also having folks that have worked on housing as well that have a good handle on that. So with some assistance, staff can put together some really good development regulations that work. So you got to be looking at all those things. So to me, it's like, let's use that money wisely so we can end up with a really good product at the end, is my, my thought process. So that's what we'll be working on. We, we're working on it right now and we have to have consultants selected by the end of this year, but we're hoping to get that done at the first part of December. Council's working on budget and there's, their agendas look crazy, so we're just going to kind of sneak in there some way. But there's some things that just need to be done before the end of the year, so we'll do that.
We're juggling the plane parts as we put them on this plane we're flying, so.
Yeah, you know, it's like the Boeing, blah, 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 whatever, but we're not going to crash.
Sounds like, uh, sounds like we're just looking at it holistically.
Yeah, there you go, that holistic word again. But I think it's important because if you don't, then you end up putting together things that don't really work because you haven't thought of that other part, right? So sounded good and then we tried to do it and then, oh, doesn't work so great. So anyways, that's all I have for tonight. Are there any questions or concerns? Anybody has this evening?
I'm not hearing or seeing anything.
Our next meeting, I think, falls on the Veterans Day holiday.
Yeah, so we would meet Tuesday.
Okay.
So thanks for, I meant to mention that. So anytime we have a Monday holiday, then our meeting would be that next evening on that Tuesday.
Good to know.
Yeah. And I, you know, sometimes we would just say, okay, if there wasn't anything going on, but there really is. And also typically if planning commission falls right at the Christmas holiday or whatever, people aren't really too thrilled to be like, oh, great, you know, Christmas Eve or whatever. I don't know what date it is, but it's, it's that same week, I think. It's Christmas on Wednesday?
It's on the 23rd of December is our last December meeting.
Okay, so it's like, yeah, it's a couple of days before. So typically, a lot of times we'll ask planning commission and a lot of times planning commission will say, yeah, can we just cancel that meeting or whatever for that week? So just giving you that option and trying to get our meetings done and the stuff we need to do before then would be great.
Anyone else? All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number eight, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any known absences coming up? I am not hearing or seeing anything. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.